All right. Hello, everybody. I'm Clark. Will you take the role?
Corliss.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Morales.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Ted.
Here.
Willis.
Here.
All present.
Great. Thank you. So first up, Andrea is here with us today to walk through an update to the special events code and process. And we're doing what we can to streamline this as well as provide more opportunities for revenue for events that are taking place in the city.
Can you hear me now?
Great.
Madam Mayor and Council, nice to see you. For the record, Andrea Cantor, Economic Development Advisor. I'm here today to provide an update on code amendments that staff have been working on related to special events, as the mayor mentioned. Before we begin, I just want to mention that I'll be using the term "special event" in this presentation, which typically refers to an event that anticipates more than 1,000 attendees, which require extraordinary resources and extensive planning and not a special status or anything like that. To begin, here's some background on special events. Over the past several years, as many of you probably experienced, Boise has seen a growth in community events, with large-scale events like Tree Fort and Pride becoming integral parts of the community virency. In 2023 alone, there are about 60 special events permitted, and around 40 of those took place in the public park. We've also been having some ongoing conversations with special event organizers who have expressed an interest in updating the city's approach to alcohol regulations and public spaces for permitted special events. In response to this community-level request, staff is proposing some minor code amendments along with some code cleanup as part of this ordinance. The main change is proposed to update Boise City Code to allow for the inclusion of liquor alongside the currently permitted beer and wine during specific permitted events in select parks such as Julia Davis and Ann Morrison. Staff feel these changes will aim to address the changing preferences of our community, provide new opportunities for event growth, and broaden revenue opportunities for special event organizers. I also want to note that we are not proposing any changes to the current special event process or procedures, which includes the robust special event committee that already reviews each application. So this slide just provides an overview of the external parties and internal state departments that have been engaged, consulted, and are generally in support of this change. I want to point out that Tree Fort and Boise Pride are on this slide as they've been actively engaged, but these code changes would benefit any interested parties. Here's just a quick snapshot of outreach kind of done to date from June to November, for the most part. They got us where we are today, mainly illustrated in the orange boxes. Okay, so this brings us to the specific code changes being proposed, which most are outlined in the slide. Staff recommend these amendments to Title III, Title V, and Title VII, but I won't get into all the details. A Boise City Code to allow for liquor to be sold in addition to beer and wine in specific parks with an approved special event permit and any other permit that would be needed. Again, this change to the alcohol kind of code would only apply to permitted parks and select park areas that already allow beer or wine with a permit. In our code, there are about 17 parks out of the total of 92 parks that allow beer and wine with a permit, and this would not change. An example of these parks, which are primarily, the larger parks include Julia Davis, Ann Morrison, Cecil Andrews, so places that we currently see a lot of events. For next steps, following the work session, the ordinance is anticipated to be placed on the first reading calendar this evening, the second and third readings to follow with council's approval. This timeline would allow for these code amendments to be in effect by the end of the year to support special event organizers for the 2025 events. And with that, I think you've your time and stand for any questions.
And I'm here. Couple of questions. Andrea, thanks for the update. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, Andrea, how many of, how many of the events of the 40 or 60, so, have requested that they have liquor as part of their events?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Walz, thanks for that question. We actually didn't solicit all of the special event organizers. We mainly focused on the two that brought it to us, Boise Pride and Tree Fort Music Festival. The reason being is we just, we saw this as an opportunity, as something that we were adding to what was possible and not something we were trying to take away. So we, we just saw it as a positive and not something we need to solicit everyone's input on.
Paul, I'm here. Andrea, I think maybe you're getting to this. Was there an event that specifically asked for this? And then that's why we took a look at it? I'm trying to find the origin of why we're doing this change.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Walz, great question. To clarify, Boise Pride and Tree Fort Music Fest came to the city and illustrated in different ways of why this would be beneficial to them. Some of the reasons you saw on the slide, just both as a way to kind of address some of the changing needs and interests of the community that are attending these events, and also as a potential opportunity for additional programming and revenue for the future as they grow these events.
And one more. I noticed in the change that the container was different, but you couldn't have an actual alcohol container that was labeled. Did I interpret that correctly?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Walz, that is correct. There's actually other places in the current code that speak to something like an opaque container that relates to things like a red cup or clear cup. We did make a little code cleanup to pull that language into the parks code under alcohol and also to kind of promote more sustainable options. But you're really asking about the marketing piece. It would be a cup that could not have advertising and marketing on it as dictated by state code.
Yeah, so I couldn't have, to think of an alcohol, I can have a branded fifth of gin in the bottle.
Or like, so I've got a question on that because I've been to some events where they'll have like Idaho 44 North metal cups. Is that, is that not allowed in this because it has the Idaho 44 North thing on there?
Madam Mayor, how it's.
Is that what you were getting to, Councilmember Walz?
Yeah, yeah. Madam Mayor, how it is outlined in the code is that would be correct. The cup would have no marketing or branding on it. Correct.
Madam Mayor, thanks for your work on this. Andrea, I just wanted to express some support. I know I've heard lots of recent rumblings about our, our difficult process, you know, the, the robust process that we have for special events. And I, you know, there's such a huge asset to our community, build character and building community and bring folks downtown for those events that are downtown. So I really appreciate anything we can do to help offset their costs for them and make it, make the process a little bit maybe less restrictive where we can to still promote safe community events, but to really streamline the process. So I appreciate the attention to this. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just a couple of clarifying questions. So like, right now, if I was at an event like Tour de Fat in Ann Morrison Park, I could drink 10 beers if I wanted to, but I couldn't drink one cocktail because that would be illegal. And so we probably have a lot of people who, I think more so recently, aren't wanting to drink beer, but they, you know, maybe they're gluten-free or maybe a variety of different things, but they are potentially drinking a cocktail, not necessarily drinking more alcohol, just a different form of alcohol. And that's kind of what this is trying to, to address, correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Halliburton, correct. This is just to expand the options. Like we kind of pointed in this presentation, we currently do allow beer and wine. And we also allow the definition of alcohol. So we've just made sure to include liquor in there to expand the offerings. If the event organizers choose to select that.
Yeah, that definitely makes sense. And so also, if I'm at Ann Morrison Park, and let's say that I'm playing like baseball or I'm playing frisbee golf, disc golf. I could be drinking beer at this point if it's not in a glass container. I think that's the rule. And if we pass this, I could also be drinking what we would call hard alcohol or liquor as long as I wasn't drinking it out of the bottle or as long it was in a different container. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Halliburton, we are not changing the rules to specific events. So if you're there for maybe a sporting event, unless it's a permitted special event, then the liquor would not apply. We're not changing some of the rules to just beer and wine in parks for regular.
Perfect. So again, just to clarify, so let's just use, keep using Ann Morrison Park as an example. They could have an event that allows liquor if they have a special permit for it. But normal people who are going to the park and they're not participating in the event, they're just hanging out by the fountain, they would still be the same beer and wine rules that exist, and they would not be allowed to have liquor. So it'd be special event permit only.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Halliburton, that's correct.
Perfect. I think those are all my hypothetical alcohol-related questions. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Yeah, just some clarifying questions for me. I'm not super familiar with the alcohol business industry. So kind of curious if you can walk through, how would this look at the special event permitting process? So when that, when, when someone is applying for a special event and they want to be able to sell liquor, are there going to be certain standards that are set? So how does that, or is it just if they ask for it, they get it? So kind of how that looks. And then also, how does the actual implementation look in terms of, are there already vendors that provide this service? You know, obviously not in parks, but for other special events, there's already an industry here in Boise that would have those liquor licenses to be able to do that for these. Maybe just give me kind of a picture of the industry, if you know.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Morales, great question. Our special event committee does review all applications. It's a pretty lengthy application that asks a lot of different questions, one of which is kind of your safety plan. Where will your fencing be? What is your footprint for different activities that you'll be hosting? So a lot of the questions are reviewed by the committee. And so if you were proposing a beer garden that's going to have beer, wine, and liquor, questions would probably come up about how are you fencing? What will you be serving? What will security look like? Like, a lot of those questions are answered and reviewed with a special events committee. So same with this. If you were going to add and ask for liquor to be added with your event, it's going to be folded up into our current process. So the same, if you select that you will be having beer and wine, there are different rules of how you obtain those permits and what you need to do before your event to be able to do that. So to not get into all the details, it's currently part of our process review. And there are numerous folks that sit on the special events committee, police, fire, emergency services, clerks, that really help applicants navigate that process and make sure that they are addressing the needs that are, that are brought up before the event begins, especially as it relates to anything with public safety.
So Madam Mayor, yeah, I, I actually have gone through the special event process for a few years for an event, and it is extensive, robust is a good term. And I think that's an important piece of this, that we have that process that we're going to ensure that if, if these things are approved, it's going to, it's going to be fully vetted. And then just, can you speak to the industry in Boise? I assume there are liquor vendors already that would be servicing this. It's not creating some new industry. They're already out there servicing private events, I would assume.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Morales, you're correct. There are some vendors that would be able to participate in this. It's not creating something new. It will be up to the special event organizers to figure out what will work best for them. As you are probably aware, there are some organizers that may have their own liquor license that they can get a permit or there's different ways they'll be able to do it, but that'll be something they'll need to sort out before their event is allowed.
Madam Mayor, Andrea, thanks so much for this presentation and for taking requests from the event community and, and running this to ground. In regards to what we have today is the beer and wine permits, and I think about all these myriad of canned cocktails I see out there. So those aren't probably falling into our beer and wine license today?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Corliss, actually, they're ready-to-drink canned cocktails because of the alcohol volume and some of the definitions for them are allowed with, under the beer and wine. But what we heard from event organizers as well, that is a, allows another variety, another option. They would still like to see liquor and just expand the beverage options for events.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, one more.
Andrea, I'm assuming that as part of the special events process, there's a timeline for when alcohol sales are available. We don't start at 9:00 AM. I'm assuming this is more of an evening activity. Could you give us more intel on that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Walz, that's a great question. I actually don't know what the restrictions are for the hours in which that you can serve certain things. That'd be a question I could probably follow up on. But I assume that is something that's built into the special events process because again, it usually triggers when you'll have, you know, police and security and your fencing. Do you need wristbands? Like, what does that look like? So I imagine a lot of that plays into when folks are offering these options that I can follow up.
Madam Mayor, if you could follow up on that, that would be helpful. And then also, you know, if this ordinance goes through, I'd be very curious if we, how it's received, not only at our events, but also with the community, and particularly if, if we have any, any additional incidents of intoxication, like if we're, if we need more police, that sort of thing as, just as a feedback loop. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Walz, thank you for that. We do provide after-action reports after special events, which is overseen by the Emergency Preparedness Team. So that's definitely something that I'm sure they'd be more than willing to build into their reports and, and share out as needed.
And Andrea, we'll all kind of getting to some of these questions. The state regulates much of when alcohol is served, how it's served, the rules around which these things would happen. So am I correct in understanding that the special events process implements the state liquor rules as well as the other things that we've created to make sure that the plan is correct?
Madam Mayor, that is correct.
Because we can't circumvent the state liquor rules. Right? Okay.
Madam Mayor, just so my feedback is clear, I just, I want to make sure that, you know, that I support what you're doing. I think this is a really great idea. I appreciate the feedback that you've gotten from the groups, and I appreciate Councilmember Walz's comment about checking in to see if this is working. I guess I would also encourage, or at least I would be supportive of reaching out to additional special events organizers to see what other barriers there are for events beyond just alcohol, because I think that there's, you know, there's the alcohol component, but there's cost of road closures, everything else, our police, security, you know, you name it going up across the board. And I think that there's probably some more family-focused events that don't have alcohol that are also having some challenges. So I'd be very supportive of us getting together a larger event stakeholder group and seeing if there's any other things that we could address through ordinances. And I think this is a great start. So thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Yep, I'll take one more, and then we need to move on to the chief. Yep. Councilmember Ash.
Madam Mayor, Andrea, my questions are about, do we have any limits on? This probably falls under state. This, I think most of this probably falls under state law. I'll hold.
All right. Did I hear one other than down here?
Yeah, just really fast, Madam Mayor. Did we consider any guardrails to just limiting this to maybe nonprofit or public, more public events, things like that? Or this appears that it would be for any private event. So perhaps I start a Liquor Fest Boise or something like that, that is, is more a for-profit type venture. Can you talk to, about that at all?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Morales, we did not put any additional parameters on how we, how folks who apply for a special event permit might be able to utilize this. We just mainly focused on adding the definition and some of the code in here and rolled it all under what currently applies to special event permits.
Great, thank you. All right. Chief Dennison, welcome. We had Nicole McKay here, was it last two weeks ago for her 90-day? No, for her one-year report, I guess. Sean Wilson here recently. He's back. Enter all of you here to commiserate with the chief for his 90-day. And now we've got Chief Dennison, welcome, chief, to present his 90-day review of the department. And I'll just start by saying thank you for jumping in quickly, confidently, and in partnership, not only with, I'm going to call out the Office of Police Accountability, but with council and your department in your first 90 days. It's been great to have you here. Really appreciate your service and look forward to the update. No.
Madam Mayor, members of council, okay. First of all, I want to say thank you for having me here. The first 90 days has been phenomenal. I truly think Boise is a special place, and the people who live, work, and play here have something to be proud of, and the Boise Police Department is no exception to that. So I want to, want to jump into just some of the successes that Boise Police currently has that I think are pretty impressive. One is talking, is looking at our response times to even our lowest priority calls. So our highest priority, the ones where there's an imminent threat to life or property, our response time is approximately six minutes. When we look at our lowest priority calls, where these are calls for search, there's holding, we need to get an officer out there, maybe to file a report, the response time is 44 minutes, and that is exceptionally impressive. Seeing from where I came from, where we would have response times that could touch 24 hours or plus, having a department that is be able to have officers respond at as quickly as this is exceptionally impressive, and I think it does a great service for the community. The next area I want to touch on is the community engagement teams. Again, this was, this is an area I've continuously been impressed by. If we look at our neighborhood contact officers, the fact that we have 11 officers who are dedicated to different areas of the city that provide a a specific name, a person that a member of that area can reach out to to talk about problems that they have, and that those officers will then work with other neighborhood contact officers or patrol to resolve those problems is very impressive. Again, I don't think that's something we see across the country, especially in the largest city in Idaho. I think it's something that's very special and something we want to continue to preserve. I think it is a, again, a great service to the community. And it helps us represent the police department in the city in the best light. The other is the school resource officer teams. The 17 officers and two sergeants we have assigned to that, they do an amazing job. This is a, really a great chance for officers to interact with the youth in our community in a not adversarial role much of the time. And then we're also benefited by the fact that we do put police officers in schools. We have an added layer of security that we're, we're delivering to our schools. And again, we're not seeing this in other parts of the country to this level. I, I think it's something that Boise has, it should be very proud of. And then I do want to highlight some pretty significant wins with BPD in, in the training it has received, and specifically Deputy Chief Brooks. I know he has taken upon himself with Captain Hill and looking at how we can improve the training, the equipment that officers have when responding to a variety of situations. Oftentimes, these are, we're sending men and women to situations with very limited information, sometimes very dangerous situations, and they have to make split-second decisions. And so I really feel that BPD, through the leadership specifically of DC Brooks and Captain Hill, has set the stage in looking at these pre-plan, pre-planning for officers' arrival, what tools do we need to bring to the scene? Looking at the planning as we're arriving, are we working through not just throwing cops at the scene, but really trying to think thoughtfully about how we can work through, work through a problem on the initial setup. And I think that actually puts us in a great place when we look at 2025 and where we want to go with training, and I'll get into that in a little bit. I do want to, and the deputy chief wanted me to make sure I noted this, and I want to note this, that a lot of that success is because of mayor and council and the money that you all have put forth and, and the belief you have in BPD to get this done. I, I'm pretty excited about where we're going to go. So we can talk about Boise Police today specifically in staffing. Currently, BPD has authorized 337 police officers, and we have about 102 professional staff positions. We will be looking at touching our authorized strength in January of 2025 and sworn, and we will be all but, all of our, all but one professional staff position will be filled in January. We either have people in process or have actually been hired. So we're in a great spot there. And that last professional staff position, I'll talk about a little bit later and, and what that's going to look like.
And so, chief, when you say staffing numbers are nearing authorized strength, means in January, the vacancies will be filled?
Madam Mayor, yes, yes, ma'am. We are looking at as long, as long as we don't have any significant drops, people dropping out, we should actually touch nearly 337 sworn police officers within the Boise Police Department.
Great. And when you say people dropping out, you mean because we already have enough in our academy so that if they complete the process without changing their mind, you've got the numbers you need to fill the vacancies?
Madam Mayor, that would include some folks who maybe don't make it through the training process, or they decide to leave on their own. Just law enforcement is not for everyone, so we do have some folks who get through the program. They don't actually meet our standards and/or they realize it's not for them. We do anticipate some retirements, and I'll get into that and what that'll look like and how we'll need to continue the training process to keep us at or near authorized strength through 2025.
Great, thanks. I appreciate that because this has been a priority of mine. And you said coming in, just as Chief Weineger had said going out, and I was able to say even last year, that by January of 2025, our vacancies would be filled with the projections that you guys have done. And so I just, I wanted to call that out in language that normal people use. It's something we've all talked about. It was a priority I set with you and Chief Weineger, and I appreciate that you were getting us there. So thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you. So if we look at what we have, we are anticipating a realistic possibility of 25 departures from Boise PD through retirements and other separations in 2025. With that in line, we do have to make sure that we keep our recruitment up. Right now, our pipeline looks pretty healthy in interest from lateral officers, either from Treasure Valley or other parts of the country, like myself, who may want to come enjoy this beautiful city. And from the entry-level officers, bringing people in fresh who have never been in law enforcement, training them from the ground up. So what I want to get into next is department, uh, growth for BPD. Currently, BPD staffing sits at 1.35 officers per 1,000. If we were to get to the, and I would like to see a goal over five years of getting us to 1, 1.5 per 1,000. And if we were to do that today, based on our population numbers, we would look at having to add 38 sworn positions to BPD. And I, for consideration, I do want to, I do want to bring to light that for every seven officers we hire, we need one additional sergeant. For every four sergeants, we're going to need one additional lieutenant. For every three to four lieutenants, we'll need additional captain. Hispanic control grows out for the agency. So those are factors we're, that we're considering. Also, if we anticipate a 1.2% growth in the city over the next five years, and to hit that 1.5 per 1,000, that BPD would need 61 new sworn positions by 2029. And I also want to make sure we're considering the fact that for every four sworn members we're hiring, we do need to hire one professional staff employee that will help out with administrative tasks within the department, expansion of our community, our community service officers, our record staff, our public records redaction teams who are exceptionally busy, our crime lab personnel, and even training specific, specific folks separate from our crimes, our crime lab units to respond out and help process scenes. Currently, we have our crime lab folks who are responding out, processing scenes and pulling them away from other work. So I want to get into 2025 priorities for the department. The first one is going to be training, and I'm going to delve in deeper into each one of these topics. Traffic, obviously, there has been a lot of emphasis and concern from the community about pedestrian collisions. There's complaints about poor driving in the city and how we're going to be addressing that. Wellness is going to be a significant component and how we're going to partner with Boise Fire. And then the behavioral health response teams. We're picking four priorities for the agency. I don't want to overload the department with massive changes. I want to pick four goals that I, that I believe are very attainable goals for the department. It will move us in the, in the right direction, just improving the overall professionalism of what is a professional department today. So we talk about training. Again, we do have to look at that. We're going to have to continue to bring new officers in to keep BPD at, at or near its authorized strength. So we are going to, we're going to ask a lot of our training division in 2025. What I want to get into is what are we going to do for the entire department, building on what has already been done, been done with BPD? We're looking at a program that's called Integrating Communication Assessment and Tactics. This program is created by the Police Executive Research Forum. It's a nonprofit out of Washington, DC. This program specifically is built around training for officers on edged weapon and blunt weapon defense. So this will be, if we look at the last 13 officer-involved shootings that Boise Police Department's been involved of, six of those have involved knives. So want to look at what can we bring to the table in the form of training and tools that could help reduce that number in one, not put officers in a terrible position to make that decision, and the impacts it has downstream for the community and the people that, and the family of the person involved. So this is, this is a good program. It's a nationally recognized program. It has been trained in agencies across the country. BPD has tapped into this program a little bit. We're specifically looking at training some of our, having some of our training cadre go out and actually get trained as train the trainers to come back and bring this specific education to our department. The next is our crisis intervention training. BPD already does some level of crisis intervention training, but what we're going to move to is the Memphis model. That is considered the gold standard within law enforcement training. There are a handful of trainers across the country. I happen to know one who's a good friend of mine who is international coordinator for training. But this program is something that is used across the country with a variety of agencies. The agency I came from, I was trained in this model. And it provides a great deal of resources and education for officers that can be used to de-escalate such. And it provides a great deal of resources and education for officers that can be used to deescalate situations. And this grew out of an incident that occurred in the city of Memphis, Tennessee in nineteen eighty seven, where officers shot and killed a young man with a knife. There was a lot of community uproar. This training was built out of it. And has since been modeled across the nation. One of the other areas that we're going to put a lot of emphasis on is how we're training our supervision and commanders. Unfortunately, this is an area I think that law enforcement could do better in. It's something that we, that I started doing later in my career in Tucson. And it's how can we train supervisors and commanders for critical incident response? Unfortunately, a lot of what we've done is on the job training where we train officers to go through it. But when we do these scenario based trainings, a lot of times we're putting the sergeants in the role of an officer and running them through a scenario. So instead of doing that, put the sergeant in the role of a supervisor, observing the officers running through that training and providing correction in the moment, which needs to happen. Operational momentum can take place. There's a lot of things that can happen in fluid and dynamic situations. So what training are we giving to the supervision and the command team to make sure that when we're on these dynamic calls, these dangerous calls that, that we're getting the best, the best possible performance from not just our police officers, but our command and our supervision command teams? And lastly, in the training area, it is unreasonable to think that if we do three trainings a year, three or four trainings a year, that we're going to, we're going to have sticky, the training is going to stick with the officers. So we want to look at where can we start taking back more time? One of the areas we're going to look into is in the briefings that officers do daily. And can we do tabletop exercises? We're going to be pulling body cam video from across the country and evaluating and tabletoping those exercises. What lessons can we learn where other police departments were exceptionally successful and what, where mistakes were made? And can we learn from those mistakes and how we're going to deploy and talk those through with officers? So, and then eventually I want to get to the point where we're using our in-house videos. We're using our officers who have been through these critical incidents to go in and talk across the agency, not only in what went well, but in areas where we can improve upon to avoid outcomes that we don't want. So training is going to be busy for twenty twenty five, but I am very excited about the prospects of what we're going to be able to do. So traffic enforcement will be a significant priority, something that we'll be measuring. If it's, if it matters, it should be measured. So I will be measuring this throughout the year. We will increase patrol is, is being tasked with increasing its traffic enforcement stops. As we increase our department staffing, we're going to be putting more officers in the field. And that should free up officers' time to actually go out and do traffic enforcement. There's going to be a couple of different things that we're going to be looking at doing. One is we also, we obviously want to augment what we're doing with our motor teams and our selected traffic enforcement programs. But can we utilize community service officers in Boise in a way that hasn't been used before? And that's actually having community service officers deal with minor traffic collisions. Right now, about five percent of the calls for the Boise Police Department are traffic related incidents. And if we can use a community service officer for something that is, it's non-criminal, it's a civil infraction that they can go out, they can process that scene, issue a citation. We're going to be exploring that under Idaho law and see if that's something that is feasible. And again, that would free up officers to do more proactive work. Traffic stops is an example. One of the other issues we want to assure our officers assigned to the different areas or districts they're working in, know where the majority of the collisions are occurring in their districts and not just where they're occurring, but what time they're occurring, what are the, what are the driving factors? Is it speeds, a third obeyed traffic control device? Is there a pedestrian involved? And that way we can give the officers more information on what enforcement action we should, we want to see them take to deal with those problems. And continually work with Ada County, the ACHD on if there's environmental issues, if there is other contributing factors that we can work with them to change timing of lights. Do we need to reduce speed? Do we need better signage? Is there something that we need there? And work with them to make those changes. And as we evaluate these collisions, do public, public notices out like, hey, in these areas, these are some of the concerns we're seeing. We can do that through our social media pages that we're seeing a lot of pedestrian collisions there. You want people to make sure they're using the crosswalk safely, reduce your speeds. Just things that we can work on education as a holistic approach to deal with the traffic, the traffic issue. And lastly, I will be getting monthly updates from both the Patrol Division Captain and the Community Outreach Division Captain, who oversees the motor and selected traffic enforcement programs to report back to me on, on the impact that we're having. Wellness, I've made it no secret that this is going to be an important topic for me. I frequently say that hurt people, hurt people, healthy people, help people. We put our officers in, we, we ask them to go deal with things that most people don't want to deal with. There's research that shows that police officers will be exposed to a hundred and seventy eight critical incidents throughout their career. The average person in the United States will be exposed to two or three traumatic events in their entire lifetime. So we're constantly exposing police officers over and over to trauma directed at them and vicarious traumas. They're dealing with victims of, of these issues. And how are we going to address that? So as we're looking, as we're looking at that, we want, we're going, we're going to be partnering with the Boulder Crest Foundation. This is something that I brought up with Chief Niemeyer, which actually I think he brought it up. And then I jumped in and showed him my struggle well bracelet from that. And I think we both had goosebumps. We were very excited about what this program went through. I will tell you, I went through a program from the Boulder Crest Foundation and absolutely saved my life. And we are in, we're going to solidify the dates, but in January, we will have the first three day session. We're going to be bringing stakeholders in from different parts of the city and within BPD and Boise Fire to get, to go through the three day session, get some input, try to get some stakeholder buy-in. This is something we're going to need stakeholder buy-in from both departments to make this go through and look at a cultural change within the agency of how do we move from post-traumatic stress disorder to post-traumatic growth, which is something that can be done. Boulder Crest Foundation has done some studies and research on this. Again, I was lucky to come from a police department that was considered the flagship for this program through struggle well. And they're doing research specifically on the impacts that it's had on law enforcement. Speaking for myself, I think it is an amazing program that builds resiliency into officers. We are still going to be sending police officers and firefighters and paramedics to awful situations. But we can build with the tools we get from the Boulder Crest Foundation through the struggle well program, our tools and resiliency that they can learn to deal with this trauma and move past it and live great lives. And I think it should be important to note that if, if we're not investing in this, it's going to have an impact. It's not on the person through it, whether it's going to be suicidal ideations, abuse of alcohol or drugs, impacts on their family and friends, but it's going to have an impact on the public. It's going to have an impact on how they serve the community. So it really is. How do we take care of our folks that we're asking to do some pretty dangerous work? And make sure they get the, the services that they need so they can go out and be productive members of this community. The professional staff of the department, I was told this is an area sometimes that is unfortunately overlooked, but is absolutely critical to the department moving forward, whether it's our record staff, our public, our public records teams, our criminal intelligence units. They're, they're phenomenal folks. They are very dedicated to the city of Boise and the Boise Police Department. I'm very thankful for them. I do want to touch on just a couple of the folks we're looking at. One again is the community service officers. I have seen the community service officers in other departments used in, in very non-traditional roles. And it really helps augment the use of, that augments the sworn capacity that police departments currently have. So one I've already talked on is exploring the use of them for traffic related investigations. The other one is looking at augmenting them within the school resource officer program, expanding the SRO program to put more Boise police employees in schools to help foster that communication, that, that a community bridge building that we want to see. They will be a source of being able to funnel information to the Boise Police Department. If there's abuse or other issues that are occurring. And again, having something that's a non-adversarial contact with the police department. And this will help, the goal is that this will just augment the SRO program. And nowhere are we looking to shrink our sworn footprint within the schools. In fact, we're looking at potentially expanding that both in the Boise School District and West Ada, and West Ada School Districts. And then lastly, is going to be the behavioral health response teams. So that one full-time position I talked about professional staff that was not filled is slated for a clinician to bring on a third clinician with our mental health teams. So before the end of the first quarter in twenty twenty five, I want to assign a third police officer to the behavioral health response team and hire that third clinician. That will be helpful in three different areas. One is the, the crisis intervention training. Those folks will be critical in helping train the agency in the overhaul of our CIT training. Reducing the overall impact on patrol for mental health calls for service because we'll have additional resources that can be more proactive, engaging folks with mental health issues to make sure they stay in treatment, divert them away from the criminal justice system. Lastly, I'll touch just briefly on some of the, the planning, strategic planning we're doing around facilities. We are currently working with Boise Fire on co-locations. Boise Police Department is in need of a full-service east side substation. And looking how we can partner with Boise Fire to build that station as, with them. As opposed to building two different facilities, just building one. We are, we are working with IT to decrease the, the, the number of disparate systems that Boise Police currently uses. Try to find technology solutions to get us into one program, potentially vendor-based. It'll offer us a lot more support and hopefully streamline the work officers doing, speed up their, how little, speed up the time that they're doing reports so we can have them back out in the field, answering calls for service and doing proactive enforcement. We are going to continue with our leadership development. That's going to be critical. I've already touched on some of the first level and command training for critical incidents. We'll continue our formal command training through the Senior Management Institute in policing, Northwestern, the FBI National Academy. And then continuing to build succession planning for BPD. All of us have an expiration date at some point with our service to the city. So I want to make sure we have people in line that can step up and do the job. This will ensure continuity of expectations for the department, ensure department stabilization, and make sure that we're fulfilling the needs of the community. Madam Mayor, members of council, you have any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief Dennison, for your presentation. I thought it was very professional and very thorough. And I just appreciate it's clear that from the critical incident briefings that we've had since you've been here, that you've really digested what you've seen and what you've seen on the job and that what you're proposing, I believe, and certainly hope that will improve safety outcomes for both our officers and the public. So just want to say thank you for such a thorough and professional presentation and thank you for your leadership.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, Chief, I would second all the, the comments from President Nash. A couple of things with the traffic related aspect, I appreciate you bringing that up. That's something we've been hearing from a lot of people in our traffic fatality review task force, the pairs, council, ACHD, and a couple of your officers up. We've noticed, I'm going to say it's about eighty percent of the crashes, fatal crashes that we've seen that have been impaired by some sort of substance abuse. And so I would just ask that you keep that on your radar as well, that we look at drunk driving, alcohol, substance abuse. Because that's what we're seeing as one of the largest amounts of leading to fatalities, not just in Boise, but similar statistics across the state and unfortunately across the country as well. You'll never hear an argument from investing in wellness, you know, for your police officers. I one hundred percent agree that, you know, we need them to be having their best day possible when they're reporting to folks. And that's something that I love that we continue to invest on. And I'm glad you're working with our fire department there. I would ask that as you learn stuff from it, and if you think that things would translate out to other staff, I think specifically our library staff, that we share that where we can. If you were to look at the average amount of incidents that people run into, our library is probably slightly on the higher average as well. So as you're exploring those things and you think that it may translate out to others, I, what was the name of the foundation?
The Boulder Crest.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, yes, the Boulder Crest Foundation.
Yeah, if you find things that are transferable to other staff, I'd ask that you come back and that you would relay that. Because I do think that we have other Parks and Rec staff, library staff, that in some cases you serve as first responders as well. And then I guess my, my last sort of ask when we look at that wellness, one of the things that I really worry about with our first responders is sometimes the amount of hours that they're working and just trying to find that right work-life balance. I know for myself personally, as things get really stressful, I invest more and more time and work and I get more and more unbalanced. And it's that time away that helps me really find that balance again. And so I hope that as we're investing in this wellness, that we're also working with people. I know that they're young, they want to work those overtime hours. I would too, if I were them, but also making sure that we're working on, making sure that they're well rested again. So that when they're coming in, they're coming in on their, their very best day. Other than that, I, I appreciate the behavioral health response teams. That's been a big push since I've been here. It's exciting to hear that we have three folks coming on or three teams. And exciting to hear that we might be able to use some of those community service folks, specialists for some minor traffic related crashes. So yeah, great job. Thank you for all those things.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, I do want to touch on, there was a discussion actually today with our Infinity Group, specifically about building a catalog when it comes to the wellness of different things. Public safety is, has done, whether it's a sleep study, whether it's yoga, Boulder Crest Foundation, something we can put out to the department, other departments as a whole, where it's almost like a catalog. Hey, we've done this. Can we show you what we've done? We thought it was impactful, may be beneficial here. So that is something we are exploring, will continue to explore. DUIs are obviously concerned for us, so we will make sure that impaired driving is something that we're constantly looking at and working on education to prevent it and enforcement when necessary.
Yeah, perfect. And please ask on us when it comes time from that educational component, if there's public outreach, if there are things we can be doing to be working with bars to get more information out there. I think it's kind of an all hands on deck effort. So if we as a council can help explore other areas to get the word out about the problems with, you know, drunk driving and substance abuse, please include us in those asks.
Madam Mayor, Chief Dennison, thank you so much for this report. Like President Nash stated, I thought it was very thorough and I appreciate the emphasis on looking forward and what, what's the new priorities are going to be and what resources can be involved. Thank you very much for that. I had just, I know we're over time, so I have one really quick question. And that's in regarding to meeting that, looking at that goal of the one point five officers per thousand. And I just want to make sure I have this written down correctly. To meet this and including the increase we're expecting in population, I had sixty eight, sixty nine positions for twenty, to meet that in twenty twenty nine. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, we're looking at about sixty seven sworn positions. And then for every sworn one professional staff member, so roughly around fifteen professional staff members.
So sixty seven plus fifteen is what it's expected. Okay, great. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just for another time, I think I want to thank you for all the work that you've, you've put in. We're really grateful to have you and the mindset that you have for wellness and care for the community and for those that you serve directly in the department. And I just want to echo what Councilmember Hallie Burton mentioned about wellness and specifically, yeah, some of the things that mentioned in, in the slides for wellness and with the vacancies or ancillary to the overtime question. And, and so maybe not needing a response, but I would be curious as we get closer to the new year, if we can expect that overtime would be a rarity with full vacancies or what that, or when overtime makes sense, even at full staffing and what that should look like. And if we'll see difference there for our, for our officers, being able to get the, the rest recovery that they need. And then I would also just echo kind of Cat, Councilmember Corliss, as we talk about the department's goal that has been expressed for a couple of years now of increasing staffing. What are those? What's the kind of the narrative for the need? And so as we look to, you know, as we've looked to increase staffing and fire, it's so that, you know, quicker response time so that their crew member isn't waiting around for the next group, crew to come. And what is that, what does that kind of look like? And why is that necessary given our current environment or what we expect that environment to be? I think that would be very helpful to have in understanding. Because, and as well, have the financial analysis for what that would look like for current residents right now. Thanks.
Yeah, Madam, Madam Mayor, Councilmember, I, just to touch on, we are looking at overtime specifically hitting our authorized strength. We've been funding overtime through vacancy savings. That's not going to be something that's going to be, it's not going to be sustainable. So we're already looking at putting in places how we're going to be specifically managing overtime, putting a lot of emphasis on how the sergeants are managing their teams and the lieutenants. And then as it goes to the staffing numbers, we can, we can delve deeper into that. But one of the things I want to point out, as the city continues to grow, right now, our, our response times look good. There are areas we could see improvement in. We do want to see greater traffic enforcement, our investigations, making sure those are thorough and complete. They're going to take a little bit more time. And if we fall behind on our staffing numbers, we run the risk of, you know, it takes a year from an officer, from somebody being a, a new entry being brought on the department through the hiring process, all the way through the academy field training and out on the run as a rookie officer. And, you know, we, we teach them a lot, but they are rookie officers, still a lot of on the job training that occurs. So that is just trying to keep us ahead of the curve as the city continues to grow, but we can talk more in depth on that.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to add that, you know, it's not always easy to come from the outside to lead this large organization. But I think that the perspective that you can bring is so valuable. And I think we're seeing that even in the ICAT training and the Boulder Crest training that you're proposing. I'm really grateful that you have those experiences to bring to the department. It sounds like it'll, it'll benefit our entire community. And then also lastly, just wanted to applaud the database traffic enforcement strategy. Looking at that data to make the decisions on the resources that we have so that we can put them best to you. So thanks so much for your leadership, Chief Dennison.
Well, thank you, Chief. There's just a couple of things that you highlighted that I would do, I want to point out as well. The vacancies, yes, as I said during the, the presentation. And the partnership that you're emphasizing with the, the fire department is key to efficiently serving our residents and also acknowledging the efficiencies in the budget process too. It's long been something. It's long been something, and I've appreciated Chief Niemeyer's willingness to collaborate as well. It's a goal that we set when he came on board to look at how we could co- locate facilities. So I appreciate that. And then seeing it grow into wellness and other things. And then not only are you addressing the vacancies, but I'm looking, I, I want to highlight too, the way you're creatively looking at ways we serve with more, serve more and better the community, especially when it comes to school resource officers and getting other people in schools as well. Because of the importance of those connections between our students and, you know, safe, responsible adults that the school resource officers are. And, and then also acknowledging, you know, as we look at what a goal might be, if it's one point five, there's a lot of work to do to drill into what that costs. But also the upfront acknowledgement of it's, you know, yes, there's a certain number of officers, but then there's leadership that's needed and there's non-sworn folks that are needed. And so the, the in-depth look at that, I really appreciate. So thank you for bringing all that forward today.
Madam Mayor, thank you.
Yeah. Look forward to continuing to work on these areas to support the safety in our community. All right, one more topic. The Boise Airport influence area. We've got a team of folks here. We've got Sean and Rebecca. Sean leads our PDS department, Rebecca, the airport. And they are here to talk through where we're at so far and what this might look like. This planning for the airport influence area is key for us to be able to ensure that we have an airport that's close to downtown. As I often say, that it doesn't become like the Denver Airport where it's so far away. So looking from a city perspective at what we need to do to ensure that our airport is able to function, serve this region and grow as our region grows where it's at. It's a great economic driver as well. And then today we'd like to hear an affirmation of direction, if that's the will of the council, with this overview of, of the process that they'll go through and where they're headed. And so, you know, I want to hear and they want to hear from you all, if this is the direction they should head, we'll then deploy more resources to get there, but that's what we need out of this today. So thanks Rebecca for being here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. A pleasure to be here and talk with you this afternoon about airport influence area and zoning around the airport and how it's important for the airport and the community to grow together. And I think, you know, as we talk about this, we're really talking about evolving the airport and as our community evolves. And I'm going to start by just giving a recap. And I think that we all know this, but I want to frame the conversation. The airport, as the mayor highlighted, is a really important resource for our community, especially from an economic development perspective. But one of the things that's really unique about our airport is our proximity to our community. And so we really need to preserve that, much like we would preserve other assets in our community, whether it's the foothills or the green belt. When we think about what makes Boise Boise, the airport is the first and the last thing that visitors to our community see. And we want to make sure that it's a positive experience for those who are visiting, but also for the people who live in Boise, but also the region. And I'm sure when I started talking about the Boise Airport and the mayor started talking about the Boise Airport, we all automatically went to the terminal and commercial flights and traveling and people coming to visit us. But really it's about so much more than just the commercial traffic. And granted, that's an incredibly huge part of what we do, but there's so many other things that we do too, from cargo to the National Interagency Fire Center, some corporate hangars. The Air National Guard is here, medical transport, backcountry aviation, just a large number of users and a mixed use of users at the airport as well. And these numbers here, I've shared them before, they're based on twenty nineteen data. It's pretty impressive at twenty nineteen data. I'll just add that today we have almost a million more passengers going through the airport than we did in twenty nineteen. And so that is, when you say it like that, it really puts it in perspective. You know, we increased five percent one year and four percent the next year and another five percent, but you know, the combined annual growth rate, we've seen about twenty percent increase since twenty nineteen. So substantial. And that's really reflecting the growth that we're seeing in our community. And as Chief Dennison was talking about, he's seeing an increase in demand for calls. We are seeing a lot of increases in our community and growth in a number of different areas. And the airport's no different. I think one thing that potentially is unique about the airport is we are the airport for the entire Treasure Valley. There's no, there's no Meridian Airport, there's no Star Airport or Eagle Airport. When people want to fly, they come to the Boise Airport. And so we serve the entire valley and well beyond the valley. And nine hundred thousand residents here in the Greater Treasure Valley region. And I alluded to this, eighty two percent increase in passengers from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty three. This year, we're on track to hit about five million passengers. And we expect that by twenty forty four, we'll see over a hundred thousand aircraft operations. And that's really important as we think about aircraft noise and the airports influence on our surrounding community because operations is what drives noise issues in the region. So getting to the basics of the airport influence area. Basically, it's an overlay that goes over our existing zoning and it shows what, what are compatible land uses that protect the airport's approach zones and also our operations while considering public health, safety and welfare by limiting or placing additional restrictions on the land uses and activities within that influence area. So making sure that we only have things that are compatible with the airport. With that said, there were, there was development around the airport prior to us implementing this airport influence area. And when I say us, I mean the city of Boise historically, not any of us, literally. So we are anticipating, or back in twenty eighteen, this is a brief recent history of some of the noise compatibility studies. In twenty eighteen, there was an environmental impact study that was done when the military was considering bringing the F thirty fives to Boise. In twenty fifteen, we did a part one fifty update. Again, in twenty twelve, there was another environmental impact study that was done by the military, again, back when they were considering, considering F thirty fives. And we've done previous studies in ninety two, ninety five, two thousand and four and two thousand and six. And even prior to that, in nineteen ninety eight through two thousand and three, we had four different airport improvement program grants where we acquired property and removed residential improvements to ensure that we were keeping the land use around the airport compatible. We do expect that there will be a pending environmental impact study coming up related to the F sixteen s. It has been publicly announced that the Air National Guard will transition to the F sixteen s in twenty twenty seven. Part of the standard process for that will be the development of an environmental impact statement that will develop, excuse me, noise contours based on the anticipated flight patterns of that aircraft. So when we've talked about zoning before and we've talked about noise compatibility, I know developers have come in here and they've talked about the noise contours. And I want to be clear about how we use the noise contours and how they inform our decision. So the study is a land use planning tool and helps us make decisions about zoning around the airport. It is completely voluntary. There's no requirement to do a noise compatibility study. And there's a very specific methodology that is used to determine what the noise contours look like. Those are the noise exposure models. We call them NEMs. And they look at the flight tracks and the noise contours based on the type of aircraft and the number of operations. So they're informed. Sometimes we'll hear people come before council and say, well, airplanes are quieter today than they were twenty years ago. Sometimes military aircraft are not necessarily quieter than they were twenty years ago. And also the actual sound is one component of the contour. The other component of the contour is the number of times that that sound is repeated. The other piece to that is there's also a penalty for sound that happens during the nighttime hours between ten PM and six AM. So there are a lot of factors that go into developing these noise contours. And then the compatibility measures include things like noise abatement measures. So for example, directing aircraft to fly in a specific direction. There's a number of different things that are considered as part of the noise compatibility measure. So I would note that while noise contours inform the process, they are not the only deciding factor. I think one of the major shortcomings of the noise contours is that by definition, the noise contours, you can only look at your five-year forecast. So if we had looked at five years from the time we did our last forecast, you can see how much the Boise Airport has changed. We forecast five years. In another five years, we'll be in a completely different place than where we had forecast. So the planning horizon, when we're thinking about zoning and protecting the airport as an asset is very different than the planning horizon that we look at with a compatibility study. And I would also note that noise is very subjective. There are many people who live near the airport and they've specifically chosen to live near the airport because of great access to the interstate, because they work near the airport, because they fly often. Airplane noise does not bother them. And then there are other people who are really annoyed by aircraft noise because they work an unusual shift and they're trying to sleep during the day, or they like to sleep with their windows open or whatever the issue is. People perceive noises differently. So the noise contours don't fully take into account that it's better to look at how the airport fits in with the overall zoning and making sure that the zoning around the airport is compatible and that there are other similar uses. I think I touched on this, but this is a really great photo of the Boise Airport circa nineteen eighty seven. This is back, you know, just a little bit of history about how we developed the airport influence area. It was developed in the nineteen eighties. And then in twenty sixteen, FAA approved our current and projected noise exposure maps. Those were the most recent ones that we did. But when we had the conversation here recently about zoning and development around the airport, we thought it was important and council thought it was important for us to come back and talk about, are the noise contours that we used before, is it the right measure in the airport influence area? Is it the right designation or are there other things that maybe we want to take into consideration? This is a little bit of an eye chart, but I'll, I'll try to walk you through it. So C is the blue area. It is the most restrictive. I would note that we own the vast majority of the land in this designated area, not all of it, but the vast majority of it. And this is the area that has the highest exposure in terms of noise impact. Then when you go outside of the blue area and into the green, that is the area that is B also still impacted by noise that would not be considered to be compatible with residential development. It's in the sixty five to seventy decibel level. The C is above seventy decibel. So we own most of that property. B is above sixty five to seventy. B one is also in that sixty five to seventy range, but it was pre-existing residential areas. So that's currently residential areas that are considered non-conforming. And then A is the area that is outside of that where residential is allowed, but we require sound attenuation. So sound reduction, insulation. And most of those requirements are actually accomplished using the city of Boise's current efficiency regulations. Then as we move forward and we think about what is next and we think about the eventual development of the third runway, this was something that was drafted by our planning and development team that looks at, if we just did a basic transportation of our existing airport influence area over to what is projected to be our south runway, what does that look like? Because as we continue to grow as a community, we know that we have set land set aside for that third runway. And we want to be sure that as we're developing in that area and as our, and as our community grows up around us, we don't want to be Denver where we, they moved the airport out, but then the entire community grew up around the airport. We want to make sure that we're preserving that. And so the dash blue line is the Boise city limits. And then the black line is the area of impact. So as we're contemplating the airport influence area moving forward and potentially making adjustments, we recognize and will be working with the planning and development team to talk about balancing competing priorities because there's, we want to preserve the airport and make sure that we continue to be a good neighbor. We also recognize that there are needs for additional infrastructure development and additional housing in the Boise community as we continue to, to grow. So you know, we want to look at citizen safety. So things like our approach paths. We want to make sure that we're complying with our federal rules and regulations because every time we receive a federal grant, we do stipulate that we will protect the airport. So what does that look like? That is a little bit subjective. But we want to make sure we're complying with those federal rules. We want to preserve future expansion, looking at that third runway option, noise mitigation. We want to look at airport specific zoning that will be further into the future. And then some of the other issues that we're looking at are things like environmental justice, adjacent zoning and land uses. And making sure that they continue to be consistent. We'll consider existing infrastructure corridors and transportation corridors and then other needs of a growing community. So with that, I will transition it over to Sean to give his perspective on balancing these key priorities and then talking about the process moving forward.
Mayor, councilmembers, so the, the procedure for many airport influence area is a zoning ordinance amendment and zoning map amendment and a comprehensive plan amendment. So it's a pretty robust process to update the overlay. When airport and our team discussed this, we thought that first step is looking at balancing all these priorities and coming to council in a work session to discuss them, like how far do we have the bubble, the contours. Second step, at least procedurally, I call it a neighborhood meeting, but this is a pretty substantial neighborhood. If you think about, you know, how far the impact is for this overlay. Third step, of course, is documentation. We prepare all the applications, submit them, and then goes through PNC and city council for a decision. The timeline for that, we're thinking, and we could be more aggressive with this, it's kind of a conservative timeline, but prepare recommendations for city council. So a couple of months out, we would come with here are some options and here's a direction we think we would go. Second will be coordinating with stakeholders and that's part of the application process. We've got to prepare the application, communicate with like many stakeholders in the area. There's federal, state, county, our property, private property, just a lot of stakeholders. And then a couple of months to go through commission and council hearings. With that, I forgot the question slide after that. That is the last slide.
That's all right. We're tight on time. So what I'd ask is if you go back to that, the process timeline and just get a check and nod off from council on this.
Madam Mayor, just a couple of questions. I know we talked about the noise decimals in the current areas. Is, which study is that from? And is there going to be another study for the noise ordinance to see? I mean, we've seen significant increase in flights with cargo and with people. Will there be another noise ordinance study for this?
Thank you for that question because that was one of the key points that I wanted to highlight. I would not necessarily recommend doing another noise compatibility study. Yes, we are seeing an increase in flights. But again, the noise study by regulation, we can only look out five years. So I think that it's going to be outdated before we almost even finish it. The military will do an environmental impact study. Based on their proposed new military aircraft, which would have the most. Significant impact on our noise compatibility moving forward. And they will develop noise contours as a result of that process.
Madam Mayor, follow up. I know we're looking at that third runway as a change potentially in the overlay. But have we taken a, a long look out like the thirty fifty year horizon to see what is that, what is our airport going to potentially be like? Maybe modeled after other airports?
Our normal planning horizon is twenty years. And that's what we're doing. We're doing a master plan. So generally we don't look past twenty years. It's not that we shouldn't. Um, and I think we can do some preliminary plannings, but. It's very hard to plan beyond that twenty year timeline, but we, I think we will look at that as part of our master plan in terms of. Future infrastructure. So we have a third runway. Is there room for a fourth runway? What would that look like at some point in the future? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, um, I would just give a quick thumbs up as far as the direction goes. I would say the two months seems relatively ambitious to me. I like things going quickly. Um, and so I would guess I would just warn you all and maybe us if to make sure that that two month timeframe makes sense. Otherwise, direction I think is looking good.
Great.
All right. We've got, thank you both very much. We've got an executive session, um, that will take over dinner, but I need a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we go into executive session to discuss land acquisition pursuit of Idaho code section seventy four dash two oh six one C.
Second.
Clerk? Dead.
Yes.
Willis?
Yes.
Corliss?
Yes.
Hallie Burton?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.